Okay, everybody, I think we'll start the first couple of slides are just introduction and housekeeping. And other people can join us as joining us as we progress. So welcome everybody to the this webinar on delivering social value hosted by ourselves Southwest Procurement Alliance. And we have three people presenting myself, Mary Benel, the Director of Southwest Procurement Alliance, Holly Golden, who's Head of Procurement of Plymouth City Council, and Terry Brewer, who's Head of Public Sector Delivery Social Value Portal. Just to say, we are recording this webinar and it the recording will be available on YouTube and we will be sending a copy of the recording and the slides out to everybody who's registered to attend. So yes, this is us, this is we're going to be talking about social value. And and the reason we decided to do this is because a lot of our client organisations are increasingly focusing on social value, which is not surprising, we've had the Social Value Act around since 2012. And Holly will talk a bit more about that. But there's a big push in 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 the new landscape that is that is the new now. Just some housekeeping, we should be, I should be speaking for about five to seven minutes and then hand over to Holly, who'll speak for about 15 minutes and Terry, who'll probably speak for about the same amount. And then there'll be time for Q and A. So we have on on the bottom of your screen, you'll see the Q and A button. So please put your question in there and we'll get to them at the end of the webinar. And you can either send them anonymously or say who you are, totally up to you, one way or other. So so delivering social value, why? And I'm sure a lot of you have been involved in social value delivery through your contracts. I think we all have and it's all been around even before the Social Value Act came into existence. Couple of just referring to a couple of key reports and issues that come up. There's this report from from the Institute of Economic Development called From the Ground Up. And I do recommend it if you haven't read it, it was published in in March this year. And it's a good read, there's a summary and there's some case studies. And just a very, very interesting statistic or for me, you know, it just encapsulates why we want to deliver social value and why we want to make our construction and maintenance pounds go further. This 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 little paragraph from the Office of National Statistics showing that around the third of the population live in the 10% most deprived areas. And in those areas, one in four people suffer with long term illness. Life expectancy is on average 16 years less than those in more prosperous areas. And over a third have no formal qualifications. And there is on average half a job per working age person. We are one of the most unequal economies in the developed world, which I think, you know, sort of took me aback. I knew we weren't wonderful in terms of equality, but but it certainly, reading the report recently, really, really, you know, brings it home to me about why we should be focusing on this. And I think the other thing is, you know, if every one of our construction and maintenance pounds had to deliver double, quadruple or tenfold the value in social benefit, making a real difference, then we can start transforming both individual lives. So, you know, I won't get on my moral bandwagon, but I do, I do feel it's it's really important and we must do more and try and do more and work together to do more. The the Institute of Economic Development report is very interesting because what it what it has is this little graph in its summary. You know, on the left, it talks about what's been happening in in social value delivery. Output or input focus not aligned to needs often considered and one for me only considered at later project stages, unmonitored and uninforced. So that's that's the a lot of what they found when they looked at the report and were looking at social value. And and the idea is to get to the right outcomes and impact focused, addressing disadvantage, needs assessments, proportionate and clear goals aligned to a transparent social value strategy, monitored and enforced results and collaboration agreement across boundaries. And I think, you know, for me, as as somebody delivering procurement solutions, this applies so much, you know, upfront planning is is so important and collaboration, working together, clients, working with people who are going to deliver their projects, working with the community and voluntary sector, who will maybe be part of this solution and working with people together. It's all about planning upfront, making it not making it and, you know, a last minute requirement, oh, let's shove in a bit of a requirement for for, you know, some some community engagement days and 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 a couple of apprentices. It really has to be part of a proper policy moving forward. So as I say, I recommend that report, you can download it from the web. And just obviously, central government is is in the new normal, taking account of social value. And they've just produced this procurement policy note, talking about how all government contracts over 10 million will have to have social value in there. And they talk about a social value model. I don't think they've quite got the model up and running yet because they say they'll be giving further guidance. But just to say that, you know, central government's getting its act together. I think local authorities have already done a lot in getting their act together around social value, certainly in the South West have. So just who are we, Southwest Procurement Alliance? I think you all know us, we're part of the LHC group. And what have we been doing about social value? Just to say, we're part of a wider group and what's great is although we only relaunched ourselves last year, some people aren't quite aware that we're part of the LHC group, but we are part of a national group. And I'm sure all of you have come across us before and if you need more detail, do go to our website. So what are we as an organisation doing? I think our strap line through improved procurement, deliver better homes and buildings that enhance local communities. So, you know, little bit of marketing speak for me, we don't just offer off the shelf procurement solutions. We our goal, our primary goal is is to use the procurement solutions to deliver better homes and communities. And so what we are actually doing is we have been for a long time recording the number of people in communities touched by our activities. And we we do collect from our companies delivering projects through our frameworks, the number of employed local labour and unemployed offered. We work with clients of framework appointed companies to deliver social value through projects, so at the project level. And we do offer grants because we're a not for profit organisation, we offer grants out of our surplus to community and social value organisations. And in the South West, we have, we offer a grant of a thousand to every organisation that has a project delivered through us. And it makes a real difference to those smaller charities who don't actually find it easy to access funds. But the other thing we are doing, and this is this is the much more strategic thing and the way we're upping our game, is we're launching some lifetime values and looking at lifetime values through our frameworks. And that's work in progress. I mean, I will admit, you know, we need to up our games. We've always thought, oh, well, we can do social value through our projects, but we haven't thought about it at framework level. But I think now, you know, that's certainly where I'm I'm focused. I want us to deliver through our framework levels, develop alliances. We have our overarching framework alliance contract, which talks about collaboration amongst companies who are on that framework. And I think we need to do more there. So I'm not saying, you know, we are, we are work in progress like a lot of other places on this matter. This is some of the community benefit fund projects we're doing quite well featured on our website, but they do make a real difference and a very positive message to to the community. And this is what we're doing is we are our lifetime values, we're working in alignment with the Construction Innovation Hub, who've produced their their quality matrix. And we're working with them, it's still development work in progress with them. But this is very much where we we see ourselves going over the next few years. So just to say, I haven't talked about us at all because you probably know who we are and are involved with us. But we do have a website that has all the details of our who we are, we use Twitter and LinkedIn lots. So do link up with us, you know, if you're not already linked. And just finally, to say that we have out at the moment four contract notices for for new procurements. These are national ones, but we do have a regional regional lots and we are very, very focused on providing regional opportunities to far regional companies to to sort of keep the keep the pound and the social value within the South West in a in a not too exclusive way. But these are the ones that are there, supply and installation of communal doors, public buildings, construction, infrastructure, roofing, and then temporary and modular buildings, that's that's a non residential one. And that's a very popular framework through 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 our region. So thank you very much, that's me. I'm now going to hand over to Holly. I've got her slides, so there'll be a bit of an interregnum whilst I get her slides up, hopefully. No panic, everybody, let's just see if I can get them. This is where I can't find them. Oops, they're not there. Emily, have you got them? Let's just see if Emily can get them up for us.
Yes. Can you see it?
Yes, we can, yes, I shall turn off my mic.
Okay. Ready, Holly?
Yeah, I'm ready, thank you for sorting out my slides. Difficulties.
It's teamwork.
Yeah, perfect, thank you. So I'll just I'll just obviously let you know when I need to move, thank you. So hello, everybody, my name's Holly Golden and I'm the Head of Procurement at Plymouth City Council. So I'm here today to talk to you as a Southwest Procurement Alliance client and more widely represent the thoughts and perspectives of social value from the public sector. So while social value is not a new concept, I thought I would first just go over what social value is and what public sector organisations such as Plymouth mean when we say social value. I will then talk about why social value is so important to us clients, particularly in the current climate. And finally, more specifically, share the PCC perspective, which may give you some insight into where public sector organisations are going with their policies. So if I can have the next slide, please, Emily. So social value is a term obviously that's bounded about quite freely in the public sector. And we sometimes forget and appreciate that while social value has been the topic of conversation internally for quite a while, it's perhaps not only more recently that it's been having those focused discussions with suppliers about it and more clearly including it in our procurement activity. Indeed, there may be people here today who've never heard of the term, so hopefully I can I can ease you in gently today. So really, at its core, it's a way of thinking that requires organisations to move away from narrowly defining the value or worth of their activities by simply looking at the cost and quality of those activities and actually taking a broader perspective, which also considers the wider economic, social and environmental effects of their actions. And in terms of procurement, this means, you know, buyers awarding contracts based on price and quality, but also the generation of these wider benefits. Emily, if I can have the next slide, please. So when we say wider economic, social, environmental benefits, what do we actually mean? Well, here are some examples, so taking each one in turn. So economic, so it's about getting more local people in employment, including support for disadvantaged groups, such as people with disabilities and the long term unemployed. It's about improving opportunities for SMEs and the voluntary and community sector to generate economic growth. Ensuring the local workforce is skilled is also very important. And therefore, social value may include, for example, apprenticeships, training opportunities and school career visits. Just to put it in in some context, for example, today Plymouth City Council's face to build project at Oceans Gate, we've been looking using social value on that. And today, it's actually generated four new jobs, 12 new apprenticeships, and they've hosted 14 construction and career advice events. So, you know, that's absolutely fantastic. And in terms of social then, so obviously, we would look to tackle deprivation and social inequalities, such as, you know, creating a healthier and safer community by tackling crime, addressing homelessness and engaging in the health and wellbeing initiatives. So there also might be support maybe provided for vulnerable groups, along with working more with the community in general, such as involvement in community projects. And then finally, environmental, so it's all about reducing our negative impact and increasing our positive impact on the environment. So reducing our carbon footprint from, say, buildings and transport, reducing waste or becoming sustainable through renewable energy and carbon offsetting, for example. It's also important that sustainability is passed down a supply chain. For example, again, putting it into a Plymouth context, 97% of waste was diverted from landfill at one of our recent civil engineering projects. And this would not have been possible without the without the drive for social value. Can have the next slide, please, Emily? So now we obviously, now we know what social value means and what the and what it what it's all about, basically, what are the actual obligations on public sector organisations to consider it? So the the term social value actually comes from the the Official Act. So it's the Public Services Social Value Act of 2012. And this act requires public bodies, so that's, you know, local authorities, NHS trusts, housing associations, all of the all of the public sector bodies to consider how procurement can improve the social, economic and environmental wellbeing of the relevant area and how in conducting the process of procurement, the commissioner might act with a view to securing that improvement. So it is worth noting here, which Mary did touch upon, is that actually many public sector organisations were looking at these benefits long before the act was actually passed. It just wasn't labelled social value or perhaps not so clearly identified in the procurement process. And it's also worth remembering that social value is a concept not bound by the scope of procurement activity and can be considered by us all in our in our day to day activities. So in terms of what social value should be applied to under the act, the requirements are quite specific. So firstly, it only relates to service contracts or those service contracts with with elements of goods and works, but not contracts that are categorised as primarily goods, goods or works. The other important thing to note is that it only applies to service procurements which are estimated above the value of the public contract regulations or the ODU threshold, as as many of you will know it. So this is currently almost so £189,330 for standard serviced contracts as it stands. So as you can see, the act has actually quite a narrow application, but it it doesn't even stop there. So social value should also only be applied if it's relevant and proportional. So in some instances, social value might not be relevant. Although I would say that today, it would be a pretty hard push for public sector organisations not to find at least one relevant social value benefit to be included in their activities. And finally, the the act highlights the importance of applying social value at all stages of the procurement process. So it's from the early engagement, early market engagement. It's about building it into the service design and the specification. It's about asking social value questions and evaluation criteria during tendering. And it was also part of the post procurement performance management, so part of that contract management process to ensure that actually all the commitments are delivered by the contract supplier. Can I have the next slide, please, Emily? So so now we know what it means and the act that actually underpins it, but why should we engage with it? So I could have actually put the the slide about the Social Value Act under this heading is indeed the fact there is an act which does place a legal requirement on public sector organisations is a reason why it should be considered. However, I think it actually detracts away from the true ethos of social value, which is that we should all be willingly sort of lift our heads above our organisation and individual activities and look at the work and look to work together to generate benefits for our area and more widely the world in which we live. And indeed, many public sector organisations are choosing to go well beyond the scope of the act when they develop their policies, which to me demonstrates a buy into this ethos over and above the legal requirements. So other than the legal requirements, why are organisations increasingly considering social value? So I've picked out just a few of the most significant reasons which are important today. So societal expectations, so obviously, this is largely what what drove the act in the first place. You know, our society is developed to a point that we recognise the need to failure, inequity, represent the diversity of our society and support those who need it. We obviously need, you know, need to remember that, you know, the public sector is funded by taxpayers' money. So, you know, and it's no longer good enough to just deliver a good public quality service to users for a reasonable price. You know, society now demands more of its money, you know, and it demands all the great things I mentioned earlier, such as jobs and opportunities. And it should be noticed that these, you know, these demands are increasingly being placed on the private sector too, because the private sector has a role to play in this as well. And these greater demands don't necessarily equate to increased costs, as some will argue. In fact, the public sector are increasingly turning to social value to actually make their money go further and drive more value through every pound spent. So we all know public sector budgets are continually being stretched. And part of the drive of social value is that, you know, the necessity to do things differently. So social value can be that channel through which innovation can be fostered. So we can work closely with the supply team to redesign our services and and follow cutting edge ways of working. Moreover, it's recognised that investment in preemptive measures will significantly reduce cost in reactive measures. So for example, initiatives looking at to tackle, you know, drug abuse should reduce the cost in responding to and cleaning up after crime. The next one is the climate emergency. So over the last few years, I think the world has really collectively acknowledged the need to take decisive action to slow down and ideally reverse the effects of climate change. So many organisations have made clear commitments to reduce their impact. And such commitments can most obviously bet by including clear environmental, social value criteria in procurement activity, for example, such as air pollution targets. However, we should also be aware that the social value measures across the three categories are interrelated and can have a positive impact on each other. For example, in the instance of the climate emergency, supporting the local economy and business growth should lead to a more prosperous organisations who will then have the capability to invest more in sustainable processes and vice versa. You know, for example, Plymouth particularly is pursuing social value as a clear part of its its carbon reduction plan. Obviously, a presentation today would not be complete without mentioning COVID-19. And this is perhaps the biggest driver right now for social value is the pandemic. There is a collective recognition by the public sector and certainly the South West organisations that I'm in close contact with, that in light of this crisis, more does need to be done to support the the local local areas. In the instance of Plymouth, we're now driving our social value policy as a fundamental part of our COVID-19 recovery programme. But actually, up and down the country, organisations are looking at their procurement policies to determine how they can make and deliver better commitments to their local area against, but all against the backdrop of rules and regulations. So that's always the difficult thing, isn't it? For public sector organisations, we can't just award contracts to local suppliers just because they're local. And actually, though, even if even if we could, that doesn't necessarily mean and guarantee that the spend is being kept local. And obviously, this is exactly where social value can play its part. So social value can deliver real tangible benefits for the local economy, society and environment, but all procured in a way which treats suppliers fairly and without discrimination. So I'll leave Terry to talk to you a bit later about how exactly that can be done. And then finally, whilst we've looked at a number of the general drivers for social value, the local context is also really important. So there are areas experience particular hardships and those areas can look to use social value to address these issues much faster than, say, just seeking additional funding alone. So for example, in the Plymouth context, in terms of health, the gap in life expectancy between Plymouth neighbourhoods with the highest and lowest life expectancy is 10 years. And we're only talking about a 10 minute drive across the city and that's absolutely crazy. And also in terms of our economy, despite our wealth of industry, Plymouth's productivity is actually only 86% of that of the national average. So we do really need to do everything we can to improve the standard of living in Plymouth. And that therefore brings me nicely on to Plymouth's perspective and how we've approached social value. So Emily, if I can have my last slide, please. So we we first published our policy in 2016, which really signaled our strategic intent to take into consideration these wider benefits when defining value for money and awarding contracts. However, we did actually refresh our policy late last year to make that even stronger statement. And when the we the slides get circulated, there is there is a link there to our policy for those who are interested. So I wanted to sort of start by reading out a part of the the statement made by our councillor Chris Pembethy, who is the councillor for procurement. So he explains, whilst we have a legislative obligation to consider social, economic and environmental value when deciding how we spend our money, as a cooperative council, we are committed to acting in a socially, economically, environmentally responsible way. It is therefore vital that we do all we can to secure this positive additional benefit over and above the quality and financial value of any contracts we procure or permission. Through our policy, our ambition is to both meet the expectations of social value legislation, but also exceed it, bringing noticeable positive benefits to the city and our communities. So here I've put some of the some of the highlights of the policy. So for Plymouth City Council, actually, social value is not just applied to service contracts as the act requires, but actually to all types of contracts, so that does include goods and works contracts. What is more, whilst social value requires public sector organisations to just consider social value above the ODU threshold, PCC has made it a mandatory requirement to apply it in these procurement processes. And this is actually well ahead of central government, who only last month announced that they would be making such consideration mandatory moving forward. And in fact, taking this one step further, for procurements below the ODU threshold, PCC has decided that social value should be considered, but this is in more discretionary capacity. And then where it is to be applied, it should account for between 5 and 25% of the award criteria. So this really indicates our intent to both offices and suppliers that we are looking for social value wherever possible. And we do seriously value such commitments. Again, to put this in context, for example, the council recently undertook a procurement for, it was an archaeological excavation and it had an estimated value of around £50,000. And we actually set the social value weighting on that one at 25% because we really wanted to show, you know, obviously, one, it was relevant and proportional. But actually, we really wanted to show that, you know, we're not just saying this, the policy isn't just words, that we are actively pursuing our social value. And the most recent development is that in response to actually COVID-19, we've commenced a sign off procedure. So actually, where any procurements that don't include social value, robust justification does have to be provided and signed off by a manager. So this does again, yet again, ensure that wherever we can, we are supporting our local area through this crisis. So obviously, Plymouth City Council's approach might be seen as quite a bold one by many of you. However, we are only actually following the footsteps of others such as Bristol, for example. But I do also know that public sector organisations across the region are, as we speak, drafting their policies and they are looking to make commitments over and above the act. Therefore, you know, me sharing Plymouth City Council's perspective today is perhaps a glimpse of what may become a standard approach in the not too distant future, particularly in the South West. So now hopefully, you know what social value is, where it come from and why it's important to public sector organisations, particularly Plymouth. I will hand you over to Terry, who's going to go through what social value actually might look like in a procurement activity. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Holly. Good morning, everybody. So as Holly said, or Mary said earlier, I'm Terry Brewer, so I I'm the Head of Public Delivery, Sector Delivery for Social Value Portal. Can I just check if everyone can see my screen, okay?
Yeah, we can see it.
Great, okay, thank you. So what I want to start off with is just to talk about your background, if it let me do it. A little bit about Social Value Portal, first of all. So our unique selling point is our measurement system, which is which we use to measure social value. And that's called the Toms, so things, outcomes and measures. And I'll talk a little bit bit more about that in a in a moment. Linked to that, we, the portal has a procurement platform. And the purpose of that is to enable Uh, and the the purpose of that is to enable um bidders to public sector tenders to be able to submit social value offers in an open, fair and transparent way. So that's so that it's all in accordance with the public procurement regulations. Um, my my background is 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 local government, so uh, like government procurement, so I can talk confidently around contract management and say that um generally, local government is 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 poor at contract management. Um, not 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 because it can't do it well, but because it never really puts the resources into it. So adding adding social value uh into that mix as 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 an area that also needs to be contract managed can can cause difficulties for uh councils. So our portal also has a contract management tool associated with it. Um, and then we can do lots of reporting, so we can slice and dice the data we collect um by organisation projects, how do you want to create it? Um, we're currently working with over fifty councils and lots of other um public sector organisations down the country. Um, and we also work with a lot of private sector customers. Um, so three, three reasons why private sector come to us. One, one is because they might be bidding for some work and want some assistance with that. And if if we're not conflicted, then then we'll do so. And others want to understand how they're spending their corporate social responsibility budgets uh better, so that they're ensuring they're spending those wisely. Uh, and others are under pressure from investors who who uh want to invest in companies that that got a good social, local community type vision uh about how they conduct their business. So, uh, again, that's that's why companies come to us. And our story in numbers, so so far, we we we've had sixteen hundred projects under management in the portal. Um, with with uh something like fourteen billion pounds worth of contracts going through the com- going through the portal to date. Um, and we've got seven billion of that under under management at the moment. Uh, and that's unlocked over seven hundred thousand hours of volunteering hours, uh, nearly fifteen hundred jobs for disadvantaged people, and over two billion pounds local spend. Uh, and what what we find on average is that um social value constitutes twenty five percent uh additionality on procurement. So in other words, if you've got a procurement that's that's worth a hundred thousand pounds, the council could expect to get twenty five percent additionality of our social value on top of that hundred K, so twenty five Ks worth of social value um to assist them to to deliver what they need to do locally. Uh, so just a quick overview on how councils generally are implementing social value. Um, as 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 Holly said, um, the Act only refers to services, but um I haven't come across a council yet that's not applying it across the board to goods, works and services. So that is pretty common and it's used universally. Um, what what we're seeing is that most councils either start asking for social value at fifty, a hundred K, but there are a few, and as as Holly mentioned, Plymouth is one, uh, where they will ask for it up at fifty K and above. So um, that that's uh something that 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 threshold's been going down over the last couple of years. Um, and equally, waiting for social value as part of your quality price matrix have been creeping up. Um, so I think if we were having this conversation a couple of years ago, as I said, ten percent was the maximum that that councils were applying. But but we we're seeing a lot of councils now who are at twenty percent. Um, as you saw, Plymouth at tw- five to twenty five percent. Manchester are looking at, uh, for some contracts, thirty percent of which twenty percent will be social value and ten percent will be uh environmental issues. So waiting's creeping up and twenty percent, I think, is going to become the norm over the next few years. Um, what that means is that potentially for a lot of procurements, um, social value will be the determinant factor in who wins, who wins a procurement. Um, so it's really important that that if if you're a council, your evaluation procedures for social value and and contract management of it are robust. They could, if you're a bidder, um, you need to make sure that your 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 offering around social value is 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 equally robust and you know what you can offer and then what you're able to deliver. Um, and and one thing we found a lot of councils being good at is not being prescriptive about social values. So, in other words, not saying you must give us two parentheses or you must give us this. Um, because that that can add add to bidders' costs. If it's not something you can easily do, then then that could add to your costs. So generally, most councils are leaving it to um to to bidders to decide what's relevant and proportionate to offer by our social value, given the the nature of the contract and and the potential value of the contract. How do we measure social values? I mentioned the Toms. So if I could just give an example where a new job has been created as a result of a procurement that a council has undertaken. Now, on the one hand, that job could go to somebody who's coming from a good background, a happy family, good education, et cetera. Um, on the other hand, it could go to somebody who's coming from a troubled family, maybe has a petty criminal record that may be getting worse. Um, now, in social value terms, the person on the left is probably not worth anything, because um if if they don't get the job, they they're not going, it's unlikely they'll trouble the justice system, it's unlikely they'll need to trouble the health system. Their family will look after them and probably they'll get a job next time round anyway. Whereas the person on the right, you're you're removing them uh from from the justice system, potentially from having health issues. Um, and plus, which they've got money in their pocket now to to start spending locally and on their family. Um, so so once, once we take into account what would have happened anyway, we we calculate that that's um worth twenty three K, giving that job to to disadvantaged persons on the one on the right, um compared with the person on the left. Now, how do we arrive at that? So as I mentioned, we we have our things, outcomes and measures structure. Um, we start off with the themes. Um, as you can see, we've got five themes. Um, now, we've based the themes on what what the councils want. Um, we we have looked at lots of council plans and strategies up and down the country. Um, and as you can imagine, all all written very differently, some glossy, some not very glossy, some thin, some pretty thick. I don't mean that in terms of, um, I mean, in terms of size, not 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 quality. Um, uh, but they all want the same things, basically. And basically, all was down to jobs and skills, promote local businesses, want healthy communities, want environmental benefits. Um, and we've added a fifth for social innovation. Um, so if a bidder wants to offer something that perhaps we haven't asked for, that 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 could be taken into account. Um, and just to give an example, that one procurement I was running, uh, it was for for a piece of construction work, a local company won it, but their social value offer was that because they worked in an era of deprivation, they knew that that parents at school, the local school would struggle to buy uniforms for their for their children uh in the next year. So they offered to buy the uniforms for them for that for the parents for that year, which was a not something we would have asked for, but that was actually a great offer that that everyone would thought was really beneficial. Now, against those themes, we then map, we've then mapped a number of outcomes. So it might be more people in local work, it might be more opportunities for SMEs and voluntary sector organisations. Uh, it might be crime is reduced. Um, and then we have a, we we have about two hundred measures that we have and then map to each of those outcomes. So in the case of, um, uh, say, more opportunities for local SMEs, it'll be spending a local supply chain, it might be reduced carbon hours, it might might be voluntary hours that that a bidder might be able to offer. Um, and and we've got units against each of those. Um, the values are then calculated using Green Book Treasury and Office National Statistics data um to to really drive forward uh a figure that that says what what's the actual social benefit. Uh, as as I mentioned, it could be taking taking somebody out of the justice system or uh reducing crime or or having a healthier community. What's the social outcome of that? Uh, and we have a research team that does all the work in terms of those calculations, um, which are then quality assured by an independent organisation and and then signed off by the local government association. Um, and yeah, under the guise of the National Social Value Task Force. Um, so the L G A chairs that and and ultimately signs off the the national Toms uh framework that 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 we use. Um, and and I can obviously say that in the ten years that social value force have been going with all their measures, we've never had a challenge on the measure themselves. Um, because they are robustly calculated, we have an economist who leads that team. Um, and it's all open source in terms of we had to view how they've been calculated, what 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 you can't do is use them commercially, but you can view how they've been arrived at. Um, so how are they then used in procurement? So just to give you an example of a a um procurement from this, in this case, it's Solihull Council. Um, they were going out for um slightly slightly odd procurement, I guess, but to replace all the tills in their schools uh with a value of between quarter, quarter million and half a million pounds. So what we've done is we map the Toms to the council's own theme. So um, we we find find that's really beneficial, because it then gives gives the council ownership of their themes, because it's the things that are in their their council plan that that the members and the councils will recognise and the senior officers will recognise. Um, and it it shows how social value is helping to deliver the the key areas in in the council plan. Um, in this case, the quality matrix for the for this one was forty percent quality, uh, forty five percent price, and then Solihull have got fifteen percent for for social value. But what what you'll see there is that it's that that is then subweighted between qualitative and quantitative. So the quantitative is how much social value are you offering? So, you know, the number of parentheses, the amount of carbon reductions and and that that value that we 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 generate from from the Toms measurement system. Uh, the qualitative bit is is all around evidence about how you're going to deliver that and and convincing convincing us that that you've actually got the capability and the ability to deliver on the social value that you're offering. Um, so on the portal, what the bidder will see is is the Toms for for the council. So this happens to be Walkham Forest set Toms. Um, there's only four Toms on this particular page, but bidders will see on the portal the Toms for that council. All 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 they need to do is submit units for each for each Tom that they're offering um measures against, that the portal does the calculation uh for for you. Uh, and you can go back in any time to adjust up until the tender close date. Um, and then you add add your evidence, um, either as an attachment um or you can type in your evidence to demonstrate how you're going to deliver it. Um, so this was the outcome for that particular procurement. Um, there were seven bidders. Um, bidder five F was the bidder that offered um, so sorry, before I say that, what I should say is the 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 green bar is the contract value and the dark, I'm slightly colourblind, I presume that's purpley, dark blue purple, um, is the social value additionality offered by the bidder. So not not part of the contract price, it's it's the social value additionality. Um, bidder five offered the most social value, as you can see there, with with hundred and seventy eight Ks was the social value. But the winning bidder was actually bidder three, um, because it's still that combination of price and quality and social value, it's not not just on social value. Um, and so the council, in this case, was happy because they got the best price, they got good quality, but they also got a good it's the third highest social value, but they got good level of social value being delivered. Um, just to to say how that's calculated in practice, so um, let's take an example of a a contract where um you've got quantitative and qualitative element that's split fifty fifty. Um, the quantitative is is assessed, so the 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 bidder offs offers the most social value, the highest quantity of social value will get get top marks. And all other bidders will be scored in relation to that, so it's a bit like the reverse of the lowest price formula you'll you'll be familiar with in in tenders. And then in terms of the evidence provided, um, it will simply be the council's normal quality uh evaluation scoring method. And I've got one here, they could, you know, whatever the council uses, which might be not to five, not to ten, or or not to a hundred. And now, just just wanted to finish off briefly on contract management. I mentioned that at the start. Um, the way we deal with that on the portals, we take the winning bidder's offer. Um, we convert that into contract management, so that on a quarterly basis, the bidder have the the winning contractor has to upload evidence about delivery um which will, uh, if we're engaged to do so, we we then check in evidence on behalf of the council, or we send that information directly through to the council. Um, so so that the contract manager can can challenge that. Um, and we produce, if you take the left hand side, we produce a a regularity reports um showing what what social value has been delivered, what hasn't been delivered to date, so the contract manager can 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 discuss that with 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 the contractor. That the contractor can also get that information, so they can see what's being produced. Um, and then on the right, it's just an example of the sorts of reports that we can produce. So that one's for a particular project. Um, to show what was delivered by our social value, but as mentioned, uh, we can also do that by, uh, you know, what's the department delivered by our social value, what was the whole council delivered, or what was a was a bidder delivered. And I just thought I'd mention briefly remedies, because a number of number of councils are concerned that, um, um, social value offers made by bidders may not be realised. Um, in my experience, that that doesn't happen very often at all. If if a council's asked for good social value, you know, made a good social value procurement uh uh structure, um, and is using the Toms, is using a a good methodology for evaluating it, then generally, they will get they will get very good good responses back, and the contractor is one that that's uh ready, willing and able to deliver on social value and wants to deliver it, and in some some cases delivers more. Um, but nevertheless, the councils do do want to make sure there's a backstop in case social value hasn't been delivered. Um, the most common approaches I've seen to dealing with that that you may come across. Uh, so one is K P I's. Uh, generally, that'll only be used in the larger value contracts. Um, and and you'll have, one of your K P I's will be a social value one. Um, and you calculate, you know, as part of your service credit regime, you'll calculate the number of points and and allocate so many points towards social value. And failure to deliver will will generate service credit under the contract. Um, the most common one I'm seeing at the moment is is liquidated damages. So in other words, um, if you if you don't deliver on on the social value offer, uh, the council will will uh charge you the cost for it to deliver that 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 particular benefit itself. Um, and the council needs, in those circumstances, to give some genuine preestimates of of what what those figures will be. Um, but we are seeing quite a few councils start to start to take that route. Um, another option is retention. I've only seen that once, to be honest. Um, and that was in a very, very large build. Um, uh, and you you just retain uh some of the estimated profit or social value percentages part of the overall contract value. Um, final thing to say, if you're a an SME or a uh a V C S E organisation, that we have produced a guide, social value easy guide, um, which has got seven, seven steps in for for preparing yourself and and submitting a bid, social value bid, if you ask to by by the local council. Um, and I've included uh in in the slide there, the the link to that, when when that's issued out. Um, if if you're interested, you'll be able to go onto our site and and download that, so so you can uh get some get some tips on um how how to do that. Uh, and that's it for me. So I'll I'll stop sharing my screen if I can work out how to do that. Um, and hand back to Emily, uh, to Mary.
So so thank you very much, Terry and Holly, for that. I mean, it it's a it was a short session and it's only a taster of a vast subject. Um, we don't seem to have had any questions, but I've got one for for you, Terry. Um, local authorities who've signed up to use your Toms and for you to manage their social value. Um, when when somebody comes to do a tender, they'll be asked to fill in the sheet you showed, you know, put put their their offer into the social value calculator, will they?
Yeah, yeah. So, um, we we a lot of councils have got tied up with uh use proactis tendering systems. Um, and we we have a tie up with proactis, so that 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 draws through the the social value information into that as well. Um, but what bidders will be given is a is a a link to our portal. Uh, given a secure area on the portal, so they can submit their their bid confidentially, obviously. Um, like, as I mentioned, they can submit that bid any time up to Like, as I mentioned, they can submit that bid any time up to tender close date. And then they, the council can then, if they're using Proactis, draw that through or we will pull the information off and send it to council so that they can do the evaluation of the social value. Or a lot, a number of councils asked us to do that on their, on their behalf. So we will do that on their behalf. But yeah, the bidder sees what I showed on the portal so that you can submit your, your bids.
Okay. Thank you very much. Has anybody got any other questions, last minute questions? I can see there's quite a few people there, but nobody wants any questions.
I'm struggling to stop sharing my screen. I don't know how you do that at the moment. Apologies for that.
No problem. I'm not getting any questions up. We've, we've obviously given people so much information and links to go and look at, but they're not wanting to do and to ask us any questions.
Or, or they've fallen asleep.
Or they've fallen asleep. Yes. Well, on that note, yes, I think we'll, we've obviously explained it all brilliantly. So thank you so much, everybody, for, for listening to us and, and taking part in this. And I do think if there are, we will be putting it on our YouTube and sending out the slides to people who registered. So you won't miss out. But if you have any other queries or want to raise any points, I, I do think we need to work on this together and all get better on it together rather than individually. So, so thank you very much for your participation, everybody. And I'll close the ceremony. Oh, we've had a thank you very much from somebody. That's very nice. Thank you. Yes. Okay.
At the death, I worked out how to stop sharing.
Okay. Thank you very much, everybody. Yes.
Thank you.
Bye.